I'd like to call a Garden Grove City Council meeting in order. Madam Clerk, would you please call, roll?
Councilmember Broadwater.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Mayor Dalton.
Here. We'll have the invocation by Keith Jones, Public Works Director, and a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Broadwater.
Dear Lord, we ask for your wisdom to know the difference between what is right and what is popular. We also ask for your strength to act with conviction on what we know. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I say we have a presentation?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Keith Jones to make the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Frital. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to acknowledge ten outstanding students selected as ambassadors representing Garden Grove community in the annual Sister City Youth Exchange Program to Annyang Republic of Korea. For 24 years, the Sister City Association has championed the importance of cultural exchange between the United States and South Korea. Their youth exchange program is a great example of how their mission is accomplished each year. Every spring, students from Garden Grove Unified School District travel to Annyang for 10 days, and every January, South Korean high school students do the same here in Garden Grove. This exchange program is an opportunity for teens from both of these cities and countries to experience a foreign culture firsthand with families who have opened their homes and their hearts. The success of this program comes from the dedicated efforts of the Sister City Association, which works throughout the year raising funds to sponsor the students. We'd like to recognize the board members here tonight who are traveling as chaperones this year. They are Joseph Pak, Tisha Valer, and her husband Kevin. I'd now like to ask each student to come forward as I read their name, and a short bio will be read about them. First is Casey Beard. Set to graduate in June from Pacifica High School, Casey's been on the varsity swim team for four years. Being no stranger to aquatic sports, Casey also played water polo for three years. Since history is his favorite subject, he plans to major in it in college and become a teacher. When he's not in the pool competing, Casey can be found skateboarding and playing his guitar. His friend participated in the youth exchange program last year and had such a great experience, he encouraged Casey to apply. Next is Julian Bustos. A senior from Garden Grove High School, Julian is an ASB officer, a member of the National Honor Society, the GLICub, and the volleyball team. This busy student wants to major in bioengineering at UC Santa Barbara or UCI. In his spare time, Julian likes playing the guitar and piano. He also has friends who have traveled to Annyang as exchange students. Julian is hoping to see how different life is there compared to here. Our third student is Andre Cruz. Another biology buff from Garden Grove High School, Andre is a junior there and a member of the academic decathlon. He is also the project chair of the ambassadors club. As an ambassador for Garden Grove, Andre hopes to learn why students in that country are so academically motivated. In his spare time, he likes to take care of his nephew, play basketball, and Facebook. He plans to attend either Stanford, Brown, or UCI and become a pathology researcher. Next is Cam Huen. The only student selected from La Quinta High School, Cam is a proud senior this year. She's interested in biology, but her love of civics can be found in her position as president of a campus community service club and anti-drug club. She's a member of the girls varsity volleyball team and is hoping to become a pharmacist first and then open a bakery. Cam is looking forward to learning about the traditions of Annyang culture and tasting the food. Karen Islas is our next ambassador traveling to Annyang. A senior at Garden Grove High School, her favorite subject is English, and she is hoping to attend Stanford and major in communications. Karen has held several positions in school clubs, including the ambassadors club, the California Scholarship Federation, and the National Honor Society. In her free time, she likes to write, design, and scrapbook. While in Korea, Karen is hoping to gain a better knowledge of their traditions. And now, let's meet Lanu Kwat. She's a senior from Rancho Alameda's High School, and she says English is a favorite subject and is hoping to go to college abroad. She says her dream job is to work for National Geographic or the Discovery Channel. On campus, she is a member of the cheer team and the hope club. She likes to write and play the piano and is hoping to learn Korean language during her stay there. Next is Julian Lu. I'm sorry, Julie Lu. A junior from Los Amigos High School. Julie's favorite subjects are English and art, and she's hoping to attend the Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising when she graduates. She'd like to be a graphic designer, but her love of songwriting may lead her into the music industry. Julie says participating in the exchange program is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. She's hoping to learn more about a culture that she sees as so respectful of its traditions and people. And now, let's meet Dara Nguyen. Another senior from Rancho Alameda's High School, her favorite subject is calculus, and she's hoping to attend UCI and study biochem and pharmaceutical sciences. Dara is a member of the National Honor Society, the Student League, and is the founder and president of Hands Across the Sea, a club that raises awareness about social and economic issues around the world. She's hoping her experience in South Korea will help her promote cultural diversity and global awareness. Our next student representative is Christina Rubelakava, a senior from Bolsa Grande High She is also interested in science and wants to major in biology to fulfill her dream of becoming a doctor someday. She is a senior class senator, part of the ASB, and a member of the swim and water polo teams. She somehow manages to find time for the Spanish and Polynesian clubs on campus, too. Christina also has friends who have been exchange students through the Sister City Association who told her it was an experience she'd never forget. The last student traveling to Annyang to introduce tonight is Luis Tran, a senior from Rancho Alameda's High School. His favorite subjects are math and physics, and he's hoping to attend UCLA and major in structural engineering. Louis is president of both the Student League and the California Scholarship Federation. In his spare time, he likes to play the piano and the video game Rock Band. Louis is looking forward to learning how to cook Korean food and see their schools. It's easy to see that this year's group of students represents our city's diversity and community spirit well. They are highly motivated, civic-minded, outgoing scholars, and the city is very proud to have such outstanding diplomats in Annyang, South Korea. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present each of you with a city gift bag and wish all of you a safe and memorable trip to our sister city, Annyang, as well as continued success in all of your future academic endeavors.
I think you'll get it on the way out, though. Bruce, you want to grab this? Please.
There's not much room to walk back there.
So, part of the test is finding your own after we're done here. Okay? Congratulations. Just come right down here.
We're going to have to squish some that way when we get the camera.
If anybody actually gets their right one, there's an extra golden ticket.
Wherever you think is better.
If you get the one, I'd buy a Lotto ticket. Congratulations.
We might have to have two rows with the smaller ones in the front.
The taller folks in the back and the not-so-mal ones.
You might have to have two rows with the shorter ones in the front.
You're so thoughtful every time.
She's a choreographer, so, okay. All right, now, turn around and kind of get a little bit closer here.
Doesn't look anything like it.
Oops.
Hey. The beam's gone. Can we get that? Should we put the couple more in front? Okay, Mr. Park.
You need any? Okay. When do you leave?
Thursday.
Thursday?
At 1:10 in the afternoon.
Well, have a great time, and I know all of you are really going to enjoy it. And I'll tell you, when you come back, I know you're going to tell me stories of how well you were treated, because they treat you just like kings and queens, believe me. So have a safe trip and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. On behalf of all of us here tonight, we would like to thank the city council and the Sister City Exchange Program of Garden Grove so much for doing what it is they do to get us to Korea, and we'd just like to say thank you so much to everyone for helping us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, I just want to repeat what Casey said.
Thank you.
Basically, but also thank you for the opportunity and for this experience, because it's something I've been looking forward to, and I promise to go and learn a lot from you guys. So, thank you. Enjoy your trip.
Okay. And now, we'll go to oral communications for the council and the agency. Pearl Jemison Smith.
My name is Pearl Jemison Smith, and I live at 11531 Mont Lake Drive in Garden Grove. I've lived in Garden Grove since 1980, and I love this city. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to tell you about the 25th Annual AIDS Walk Orange County. I was the first chair 25 years ago for AIDS Walk, and this year is going to be our 25th. We don't say "celebrate" because we wish we didn't have to have the walk, but this year, I'm the honorary chair for the walk. That means I can do anything I want. I just, I'm having a good time raising money, and it's really a special walk because it's going to be at Disneyland. Whoever thought after 25 years we would get to be at Disneyland with AIDS Walk? We're expecting 10,000 walkers and to raise $1 million. All money raised will stay in Orange County and be distributed to nine agencies providing care for men, women, and children infected and affected by HIV/AIDS. Here in the city of Garden Grove, there are 353 persons living with HIV disease, and during 2010, there were 18 new cases of HIV reported. This disease is not going away, even though we don't hear very much about it. There is no cure or vaccine, and the medications that keep the infected people healthy are expensive and have serious side effects. I lost my son three years ago, or be three years, the 1st of May, the day of the walk, that I lost my son to AIDS. This year, we're very pleased to have the walk at Disneyland, and we're hoping to attract the youth of Orange County and give them the knowledge and the ability to prevent from getting infected. This includes knowing their HIV status. Testing will be available, free of charge, at the walk. And you and all of the Garden Grove residents can help by going to this website, www.AidsWalkOrangeCounty.org, and donating. You can register to walk there and join a team or just donate. I've just reached my $4,000 donation level, so I'm really excited about that. There's also a phone number, 949-809-5700, that you could call to get information. The money we raise is really important. $25 provides eight meals. Many of the people that we see that have HIV/AIDS are quite poor, and we help them to find homes, transportation to doctors' offices, and case management. And all of the money goes to help people with HIV/AIDS or to do education and prevention. The walk is always fun, but being at the Magic Kingdom makes it even more special. So, May 1st at Disneyland, 7 o'clock in the morning, please join us for a wonderful walk, and just know that we're taking care of the Garden Grove residents that have HIV and AIDS, and we want to prevent the disease from spreading to people like we just saw, all these young people. By educating them, we can prevent them from going through what my son went through. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Chu Nguyen.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. 21, 10/17, Rocking Horse Road, Garden Grove, 92843. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. On behalf of Donate Life, an organ, and tissue transplant organization, I would like to thank you for issuing a proclamation accepting April as a DMV Donate Life Month. I hope this proclamation will raise the awareness of organ and tissue donation and encourages the citizens of the city of Garden Grove to visit the DMV website, www.dmv.ca.gov, to register to be an organ and tissue donor. I am a donor father. Our family of four has a pink dot on our California driver license, which indicates each of us is a donor. When my 34-year-old son Vu died of a heart attack while celebrating his scoring of a goal during a soccer game with friends on Mother's Day 2009, his organs were donated. Except his heart remained to be investigated by the coroner's office, other organs of his saved four lives. His donated tissues and skin helped improve the lives of countless others. There are over 100,000 people nationwide currently awaiting a life-saving transplant, of those 21,000 living in California. Nearly 8 million Californians have pinned out on their driver license. Every 13 minutes, a name is added to the national waiting list. Sadly, 17 people each day die because they weren't able to receive the life-saving transplant they need so desperately. There will be a run-walk starting at 7:00 a.m. on Saturday, April 30th, at Cow State Fullerton, organized by Donate Life to honor organ donors and recipients, and to continue to raise the awareness of organ transplant. I would like to invite you and the residents of the city of Garden Grove to join more than 8,000 people who have joined us last year to spend a day outdoor, full of activities and fun, for a very noble cause. Please visit the website, www.DonateLifeOC.org for more information. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and City Council members.
Thank you. Thank you, Bergen.
Peggy Bergen, 32 years and counting, I've been a resident here. Well, actually, the last speaker brought up something that I just got an email this afternoon from one of my friends, and we were all asked to pray for a young friend. She's 30, and she has been waiting for a liver as long as I can remember. She has come back, basically from the dead so many times. Her spirit and the prayers are keeping her alive, but she does need a liver. And they keep saying, "We don't have one. We don't have one." So, that is definitely something very, very important, and the more people that realize that, that little red dot does mean something. Well, also, I have been a judge for the Garden Grove Pride, and I have just about got my list all finished up. The hardest part is deciding which of the 50 pictures we took were going to be the 23 that we cut it down to, and then to the three that are on the top three. It's really amazing when you drive through the city and get off some of our main roads and all of our little cut-through ways we have of getting around our neighborhoods to avoid the signals, how many really nice little neighborhoods and how many nice houses and how much people have been working on their houses. This is the third year I've done it out of five, and the difference in the houses I see in the last five years is really amazing. Our citizens are really beginning to step up and realize, "I have got a really priceless little thing in my house, so I'm going to be proud of it and show the world." It really is quite an amazing thing when you do look around our city. I want to say thank you for this idea that the city came up with. I'm not exactly how many years they've been doing it, but it really does make it worthwhile for people to see someone saying, "Thank you for taking care of your own house." But, and another thing, I just, on the agenda today, there's this, once again, the water park issue. Now, we're funding them to the tune of $47 million, which to me is quite a lot of money. I never hoped to have accumulated, seen, or gone through that much money in my entire life. But I still don't understand why, if these people supposedly are going to make so much money off of hotel and a water park in our city, and these are big companies, big corporations, why we have to front the money to them some way for them to get started? I would think if this is such a wonderful opportunity for a hotel/water park, which is not quite in my backyard, but it is close enough that it is going to impinge every single signal I use coming and going to my house once this thing supposedly gets working. So, to me, it is a big effect to me, and then to find out that our city is putting themselves financially out there for them for something we, as citizens, will never be able to use other than a restaurant or something downstairs. So, I find it, the whole thing, just mystifying myself. I've gone to a lot of meetings, and they explain how we're going to get bed tax, we're going to get sales tax, yada, yada, yada. But $47 million, that is still going to be in the books as we owe it. When they give us these payments, are we going to turn around right away and pay off this indebtedness? What's going to happen when all these bonds come due? Somewhere, money's got to get to pay for all this stuff. I really don't understand. I know I'm not a financial wizard at all, but I do know myself. If I want to go out and buy a car, which I just did last week because mine died, but I have to get my own financing. I have to get my own money. I have to make my own payments. That's the way the real world works for us citizens, and if we want to go to a water park or somewhere, we pay our own way. That's how it really, I just don't understand how we always have to finance, why we finance, 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 and if we can't come up with the money, or then they can't come up with the money, deals go through. I will say, this is the closest we've had of any of these major projects I've been listening to over the last 15 years. This is the closest we're coming to actually having something actually happen. So, that will be a marvelous adventure in itself, other than it's going to be less than a mile from my house, and I'm not really thrilled. But thank you very much, and keep up Garden Grove pride.
Thank you. Charles Deng.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Well, first off, we have a lovely meeting today, lots of good events, and of which I've participated in the AIDS Walk, superbly organized. It's fantastic. So, just a word out for the rest of the city. I'm here speaking in regards to Lita Lane. I just want to come here and update you on what's been happening with our road. Since the Planning Commission meeting in December, which voted to keep the cul-de-sac for Lita Lane, and following that, the city council meeting in January to basically approve of that condition for the hotel water project, it's been several months now, and I was concerned, I wanted to have further clarification on how our cul-de-sac is going to be maintained. And I found out recently that, to this date, no updated plans have been submitted to the city by the developers. What I do have is the current site plan. I don't know how, should I hand it to you to hand it to them? Okay, I'll just hold it up for you to see. Thank you. Thank you, sir. So, in the current site plan that's on file at the planning department, we see here that the boundary of the water park, this is the northern boundary, is still cutting through half of the cul-de-sac. And of course, this drawing was made back in September, but I'm surprised that after the council voted to maintain the cul-de-sac, that it looks like no effort has been made to at least show the intent by the developers to maintain the cul-de-sac. Thank you, sir. And I followed up with the developer website, McWinnie, and, thank you very much. And on their website, they have a brochure for the water park, but in their brochure for the park, it still shows more or less the same thing. It's a Mickey Mouse drawing that shows the cul-de-sac is still being cut in half. And so, I've expressed this concern to the city manager and the real development agency. But I was told that by my questioning, that in some way that I'm not showing my trust in the elected officers as well as the appointed officers of this city. I mean no such thing. That is not my intent. That is not my intent. I've been a resident here for over twenty years, and been going through school here basically all my life, and I credit a lot of my success to what the city has provided for me. And as such, I have every reason to believe in and trust in the people that run this city ever since I've been here. But I also have to take into consideration written documents, such as the ones that I provided to you, such as the site plan, which is on file, which is an approved document that's on file in the city. Those also say, make a statement, they also say something very strongly, and to me, very loudly, and I am a little unsure as to the intent of the developers. Incidentally, there are efforts underway by the city to prod the developers to come up with an updated set of plans, and I appreciate those efforts. But I'm here to, again, to inform the council of what's been, what's going on, and I look forward to seeing the updated plans. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Here's a subject, you're going to see a lot of me promoting quite a bit. I'm here to speak on the wall museum, and the Crowning Wall in October. I don't know if you heard the news this afternoon, but NASA has just awarded the three space shuttles remaining. One of them is going to be going to New York, one to the Smithsonian in Washington, and one is coming to Los Angeles. Los Angeles will attempt to raise two-hundred million dollars to build a facility to house it. We're going to raise fifty million dollars to build our museum from private funds. I will be traveling to a lot of the veterans groups, speaking to a lot of these individuals, and whatever nickel, dime, and five-dollar checks we get, but we will raise this fifty million dollars to build this museum. It's that important to me and to the people of this city. When the French Foreign Legion arrived in Haiphong in Vietnam in November of eighteen-eighty-three, General Francois de Neger greeted them this way. "You legionnaires are soldiers in order to die, and I am here to send you to die." This is part of the brutal history of the warfare of Vietnam, and we were a part of it. It's the only war that America has fought and lost, and it has a long history and a legacy. April twenty-ninth of this year, a couple weeks from now, will commemorate the forty-first anniversary of the Fall of Saigon, on April twenty-ninth, nineteen-seventy-five. It's the single largest evacuation of human beings in the history of the world. In the week prior to the Fall of Saigon, six thousand Americans and one million Vietnamese were evacuated from the Saigon area. In the last eighteen hours on April twenty-ninth, seventy Marine helicopters evacuated one thousand Americans and six thousand Vietnamese. This was a massive undertaking. The American ambassador to Vietnam at that time, Graham Martin, refused to believe that we had lost the war. He had a large collection of Asian curios and artifacts. He refused to pack them. He stood on the roof of the American Embassy clutching the embassy flag in disbelief. This history needs to be told. A Vietnamese refugee, Dante Nguyen, said that, "Looking into myself, I see nothing but a desert. My culture is dying." We cannot let that happen. This museum is very important to this city. Let's not let the customs and the history of this war that has so changed America to die. The Moving Wall from the Vietnam Veterans War Memorial in Washington, D.C. will be on display at Garden Grove Park from October sixth through tenth, twenty-eleven, courtesy of the Vietnam War Museum Exploratory Committee, the City of Garden Grove, the City Council, and a generous six-thousand-dollar check presented last council meeting by Roger Terrario, CEO of Griffin Structures, to underwrite the cost of the wall, stay in Garden Grove. Our residents need to go there. And if you've read the Garden Grove Journal this week, there's a very moving letter to the editor by Steve Nowey and his experience when he visited the wall in Washington, D.C. For information about the wall, you can call seven-one-four-seven-four-one-five-one-eight-seven. The website for the Moving Wall is themovingwall@gardengrowcity.org. And veterans and veterans groups need to reach in their pocket and take out your checkbook. You saw the students going to Anyang, Korea, and the Korean representation of Koreans in America. Well, the Rock Army, the South Korean Army, was the largest ally of the United States in Vietnam. So we have a long history in this war, and to write a check, make it payable to the Vietnam War Museum of America, that's VMA-11222, Acacia Parkway, Garden Grove, California, nine-two-eight, port two. I will be back.
Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I had the privilege of going to Reno, Nevada, two weekends ago, to visit some friends down there. They are in the plumbing and electrical contracting business. While I was there, we were talking, and he says, "Have you heard about San Francisco? About the low-flush toilets?" I got a copy of the email for each one of you.
Just give it to the city clerk.
You can give a copy to each one of the council members and the mayor, and here's one for you. And I was surprised at the dilemma that this low-flush toilet has caused. The people in San Francisco, and I fare well, heck, that's up and downhill, their sewers are plugging up, and now they're using chemicals in hope they can turn around and change the water down at the bottom and use it part for drinking water, and the rest goes out in a sewer. You can read this. You will be surprised. Also, do you know that they now have a two-flush toilet? What I would like to know is since the city here wanted all the residents to turn in their regular toilets for this low flush, well, they change and go to this, their two-flush system, which is for water, there's one, residue is the other pump, on the one toilet. And they have that out right now. You can laugh, but it's serious. This is, this is serious business. When you read that thing, you'll find out, are we going to be the ones paying for the sewers when they plug up, or what? Because somebody got the idea, "Well, this low-flush system is the way to go, to save water." It did. It saved water. For two-hundred million, I mean, twenty-million gallon, but it only cost them a hundred million to put new sewers in. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Just to follow up, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Just to follow up on what he was saying about the sewer system and the fact that a lot of people in Garden Grove felt that they were being oppressed by increases in their water rates to pay for the upgrades to our sewer system, but those upgrades are going to make sure that our sewer system doesn't clog up and back up. We have invested in pump stations and other things to keep our sewer system working properly. Now Peggy brought up the issue of the water park, and I won't reiterate some of the points she made. However, I am concerned about the fact that the water park is going to be for the exclusive use of people staying at that hotel. I think that's great for them. People from all over the world travel to visit Disneyland. Now, of all those millions of people, how many can that hotel accommodate? They are restricting their own business success by saying only residents of the hotel can use the water park. I think since the city of Garden Grove is backing the project, in one sense, it's been unfair to the residents of Garden Grove that they're excluded from the use of this water park. I think it might be possible for the operators to come up with a plan where there are certain hours of the day that they can make the park available, not just to the residents of Garden Grove, but also to visitors to Disneyland. They can come down and visit the water park for a few hours, then go back to the other hotels, hopefully they're still in Garden Grove, and this way, it's going to be possible for the water park to be successful, and I really hope it is, because there's a lot at stake for the city of Garden Grove, for this project to be as successful as they say it will be. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close our communications at this time. Anyone want to make comments? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to recess the council meeting for a minute. We're going to celebrate Councilman Doe's birthday, so there's a cake in the other room that everyone here is welcome to share in.
Grove Agency for Community Development, Ms. Baylor, will you please call roll?
Member Dalton?
Here.
Member Doe?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Vice Chair Nguyen?
Here.
Chair Broadwater?
Here.
Okay, we've been through public comments, agency member comments, consent items. Let's go to consent items.
Mr. Chairman, it's recommended that both items be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a member.
Move to accept.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Most received, five yes votes.
Okay, public hearings. Mr. Fratell.
Mr. Chairman, before we conduct the public hearing, we're going to reconvene the council.
You reconvene the council, let the record show all members are present.
I'd like Greg Brown to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mayor Dalton, Chairman Broadwater, city council members, members of the agency. Tonight, you're being asked to conduct a joint public hearing to consider a First Amendment to a sublease between the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development and the city of Garden Grove for the building located at 11277 Garden Grove Boulevard, more commonly known as the Purcell Building. If the sublease is approved, it is then requested that the city council approve a sublease between the city and St. Aslam's Cross-Cultural Center to sublease approximately eighteen-thousand three hundred and nineteen square feet of that building. The agency entered into a lease for the property from the Purcell Merrill Trust in nineteen-ninety-six under a master lease that will expire in 2016. Historically, the agency has subleased the property to nonprofit organizations and to the city of Garden Grove for use as office space by city departments. The amount of office space needed by city departments has varied over different periods of time, and therefore, in 2006, the agency entered into a five-year sublease for the city to lease the entire building with the purpose of streamlining the leasing process. The city then subleased unused space to community service organizations such as St. Aslam's Cross-Cultural Center. Currently, the Garden Grove Housing Authority, Garden Grove Channel Three, and the Public Works Engineering Division occupy space on the first floor of the building, which is equivalent to approximately sixteen-thousand square feet. St. Aslam's occupies the second floor. The term of the original sublease between the city and St. Aslam's has expired, and therefore, staff has prepared a new sublease with the following terms. Lease for eighteen-thousand three hundred and nineteen square feet, approximately, with lease termination set for January thirty-first, 2016, or the earlier of the termination of the master lease or the city-agency sublease. A base rental rate of a dollar and forty cents per square foot, which is in the range of fair market value for comparable office space. The proposed lease also includes biannual adjustment of the lease rate under the same formula used in the master lease, based upon the CPI index. And finally, an additional rent payment will be made of twenty cents per square foot for operating expenses that will also adjust biannually based upon the CPI. Based on the foregoing, staff recommends that the city council approve the First Amendment to the sublease agreement with the agency for 11277 Garden Grove Boulevard, and authorize the city manager to execute the lease on behalf of the city, and also approve the sublease agreement with St. Aslam's for a portion of the building space located at the same address, and authorize the city manager to execute the lease on behalf of the city as well. Staff also recommends that the agency approve the First Amendment to the sublease agreement with the city for the 11277 Garden Grove Boulevard, and authorize the agency director to execute the lease on behalf of the agency. That concludes my report, and staff's available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak on this issue would now be the moment. Hearing none, we close the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, what are your pleasure? We have a motion to adopt.
This would be for the city council to approve the sublease. It's the first action.
Okay, just a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Most received, five yes votes.
And the second action would be for the city council to approve the sublease agreement with St. Aslam's.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
And the third action would be for the agency to approve the sublease agreement with the city.
Move it.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, let's go to items for consideration.
Mr. Chairman, six A is a request to consider a development bond inducement resolution for tax-exempt bonds for the Water Park Hotel project, and Greg Blodgett is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Chairman, members of the agency, this purpose of this report is to request the agency consider an inducement resolution to initiate the process of allowing the agency to issue up to fifty-one million dollars in bonds, and this is the first step in the process of the agency issuing bonds. The issuance of these bonds is part of the implementation of the disposition development agreement between the agency and Garden Grove M X D, which is McWhinney. The DDA provides for the developer to build six-hundred-room Great Wolf Water Park Hotel with eighteen-thousand square foot of retail, including restaurants, parking structure, and also a hundred-thousand square foot of indoor, outdoor water park. The DDA also allows for the agency to provide five million dollars at the commencement of construction of the parking structure, and then in addition, forty-two million dollars thirty days after the opening of the hotel, as soon as it's constructed. The fiscal impact to the agency is fifty-one million dollars, which includes a four-million-dollar cost of issuance of these bonds. And at this time, staff recommends the agency take the following actions. Adopt a resolution, authorize an issuance of agency debt not to exceed fifty-one million dollars. Authorize the director to appoint Stradling, Carlson, Yucca, Carlson, and Ralph as a counsel for this agreement for a amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars. And authorize the director or his designee to execute any other necessary documents to assemble the financing team, including underwriters, trustee, and fiscal agents, et cetera. This concludes my staff report.
Any questions for staff? There's got to be a question for staff. Okay, somebody explain how a bond process works and how the money stream comes to a bond process. Where do we get the money to pay for this?
Okay, just explaining in terms of a bond process. The resolution in front of you today, it's just the first step, if you will. That's the inducement resolution, and it doesn't go beyond that, because what this does is just authorize staff to go and explore and put together a deal if it's viable, and I emphasize, emphasize if it's viable, and then come back for an authorization resolution. That's when you actually authorize the issuance of the bonds. And when, if those bonds are then issued and sold, the proceeds will be used as agreed with the developer in the DDA towards the project, being the Water Park Hotel. with the developer in the DDA towards the project, being the water park hotel. In terms of proceeds to pay back the bond, the revenues that are derived out of the project will be used to pay back these bonds. So the city or the agency will not be obligated in any way beyond what's derived out of that project to pay back these bonds.
Okay, and when will the bonds go into effect?
The bonds, according to the DDA, the bonds will go into effect upon the opening of the hotel. That's actually when the money will actually be disbursed. All we're doing right now is getting ready and preparing towards that goal. And essentially, the inducement resolution here adds another, an additional, if you will, assurance beyond what's promised in the DDA, that we are, as a city and agency, committed to make this happen, and that's all we're doing tonight.
Very good. Mr. Fratell, could you give us a little history on the city of Garden Grove and bond projects?
Well, we've done several bond issues over the years. Particularly, the agency has done a series of bond issues that were used to help us acquire land, it helped us do some street widening projects, it helped us do some storm drain projects, sewer projects. So we've done a series of those bonds over the last twenty years.
Did we ever borrow sixty-six million dollars for a bond project?
Uh...
Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
The sewer was about thirty-something.
We've done water, yeah, the water bonds were about thirty, and the sewer, first series of the sewer bonds were thirty.
How about the land? Forty-four million, something like that, I recall?
No, back in 2003, we did a reissue, and I think it had an outstanding amount of about sixty. But that was a reissue of previous bonds.
Okay, but this isn't something that's new to us.
That's correct. We've done several of these in the past.
Okay. And this is an inducement? In other words, all we're doing is preparing the way to make this happen if we decide to make it happen?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Any questions for staff?
According to the agreement, the bond doesn't get funded until after the hotel is completely built and a certificate of occupancy is issued. So the worst-case scenario is there's a completely built, ready-to-go hotel that somebody's going to operate, whether it's McWhinney or otherwise.
And it did say the certificate of occupation, which we issue.
Right.
So we're total control of that.
Right.
Okay, I'd like to just talk about some things that were mentioned earlier, and one of them, I did write it down, was exclusiveness. Well, it's not exclusive to just, I mean, it doesn't say that Garden Grove people can't go there. All they have to do is rent a room and go there. I mean, it's the same with for everybody. I know that we stayed in the Hyatt a couple nights, my family did, when we had our house tended. You know, there are, there are times when you might want to stay in Garden Grove, and you might have that time again in your life. Also, there are twelve other of these water parks throughout the United States. There's one in Seattle, one in Dallas, one in Wisconsin, and up and down the east coast. Boy, that might be a good trip for somebody to take. Go to the water park and take your family, and enjoy it somewhere else. They don't have to be here, and get away from here for a while. So anyway, at this time, if we have any more discussion, we entertain a motion.
I'll just add to what you were saying, too, about the water park. Great Wolf Lodge is, like you said, there's twelve of them around the country, they're a pretty sophisticated operator, and they restrict access to their own guests as an amenity to the hotel, primarily because the ones they have, they run, they run very high occupancy rates, ninety-six, ninety-seven percent occupancy even during the down times in the economy as people reverted back to staycations instead of going overseas and stuff. And so they don't want the water park to be too crowded, they want it to be enjoyable for the guests, and part of that enjoyment translates into very high room rates. All of this translates back to a big economic development engine for the hotel and for the city.
You know, I had thought about that at one time before, I thought, why shouldn't it be available for the residents of Garden Grove? But realistically, we're residents of Garden Grove, I would never think of going up and swimming in the pool at, some of the motels are there now, unless I was renting a room there. I mean, the hotels, that is property that goes with the hotel. With the water park, I mean, it's something that's even, the size of it, the magnitude of it, is something that is going to draw, but it's drawing people for that purpose, for the water park purpose. If you didn't have that, quite frankly, it'd be another hotel. But that is something that draws customers, and that's something we have to be concerned with. But again, I mean, I would no more want to go there and swim than I would to the Hyatt or the, any of the other, excuse me, any of the other hotels that people pay money to stay. If I'm not staying there, I don't think I have a right to.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. And another good point is mentioning with what is going on in Garden Grove. The hotels have been doing fine through this depression, and it has been a depression for some people, certainly. And they call it, the hotel operators themselves call it staycation, that people, instead of going to Mexico, instead of going to Hawaii, they spend the money here, they stay here and stay in our own hotels. And that's one of the reasons that we are doing better than a lot of other cities are doing. It's working out well for us. I see in the news today where the city of Montebello is going, getting ready to go bankrupt. I've heard no talk like that from us. We seem to be doing things strongly, and I'm just glad that we are. Anyway, I'll entertain a motion.
Move, approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? Okay, at this time, we will close the meeting until fourteen days from tonight. Can't find the date.
Okay, and the council is still open, so we'll go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 6A through 6I be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a council member.
I move to items.
Have motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, next is public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, item 7A is a public hearing to consider protests regarding our spring 2011 weed abatement notices, and Chief Burka is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Twice a year, the fire department initiates the seeds weed abatement program. There are three steps, which include the council's declaration of a public nuisance, a public hearing after the notice to clear the lots are sent to property owners, and a public hearing after lots are cleared and invoices are unpaid by property owners. The purpose of tonight's hearing is the second step, for a public hearing to be held regarding the notices that were sent out to property owners, excuse me, owners in February. It is recommended that the council receive testimony from members of the public and take appropriate action. These actions would be uphold any objections and direct staff to, as how the council would like to respond to said objections, overrule the objections and direct staff to proceed with the weed abatement process. If no objections, direct staff to proceed with the weed abatement process. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Move the issue.
Second.
Have motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Commission committee matters, number eight.
Mr. Mayor, item 8A is to consider the proposed 2011-12 budget for the Main Street Assessment District Number One, and Ann Iper is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, you have before you the first step in our annual Main Street Assessment District proceedings. On March 10th, the Main Street Commission approved its fiscal year 11-12 budget for ongoing services such as landscape maintenance and lighting. The proposed budget reflects no increases in assessments and will remain at nineteen dollars and ninety-two cents per linear foot. In accordance with the Landscaping and Lighting Act, the city council must direct staff to initiate assessment proceedings, approve the proposed budget, and direct staff to prepare an engineer's report. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council approve the proposed budget for the Main Street Assessment District Number One for fiscal year 11-12, and adopt the attached resolution describing the proposed improvements, directing the engineer to prepare the required report under the Landscaping and Lighting Act, and authorizing staff to initiate assessment proceedings. This concludes my reports, and I am available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Have motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, 9A is in agreement with 911 Vehicle, Inc. to install and change out equipment on our safety vehicles, and Ron Meisler is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you an agreement with 911 Vehicles. This company facilitates the changeover of our police equipment from old police units to new ones. 911 Vehicle has been providing this vital service to the city of Garden Grove since 2006. 911 Vehicle has developed an electrical management power system that has been essential in the smooth and efficient operation of our police fleet. Staff is recommending to enter into an agreement with 911 Vehicles to continue this pattern of trouble-free police patrol unit operation. Therefore, staff recommends that city council approve the attached agreement with 911 Vehicle, Inc. in the amount of three hundred thousand for three years, with an option to extend for an additional two years at the cost of a hundred thousand per option year for a total of five hundred thousand over five years for the changeover of police patrol vehicle equipment, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. This concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
How many vehicles would you change over in three years?
We average, I think, around eight a year. Depends on the mileage of the vehicles. We cycle them out at a hundred thousand.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the issue.
Second, have motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, matters, Mr. Broadwater?
Happy birthday, Mr. Doe. How old are you, about twenty-nine, thirty? Looking good. I have nothing else.
Yes, happy birthday, Councilmember Doe. Also, reminding everyone to buy in Garden Grove in the occasion of Easter, and happy Easter to the residents of Garden Grove, and may you have a blessed one.
Just happy birthday, Councilmember Doe.
Thank you, everyone. It was very touching for you to celebrate my birthday, and I also have an announcement to make, and it may be a lengthy one. So just sit back, I'm going to take about five minutes of your time. To the great people of the city of Garden Grove, mayor, council members, and staff, this will be the last time that I will address you on this dais. Effective this council meeting, I hereby resign from my position as member of the Garden Grove City Council. This news will probably catch many of you by surprise, and I will share below some of the thinking that went into my decision. I will also share with you some of the observations I have made while we're presenting you in the past few years. Before I do that, it is important to me to retrace the path that has taken me from being a refugee, arriving in Garden Grove as a thirteen-year-old boy, struggling to make my way in this new homeland, being embraced by the people of this great city, to one day sitting up here as an elected official, giving back to the city that I love, which had given me and my family our new start in life. Only those who have had the privilege to hold public office can understand the full weight of the responsibilities of being in such a position, and also to recognize its great capacity to be able to do good for others. I recognized that opportunity, and I accepted those responsibilities. But those responsibilities also require that we, as council members sitting up here, do our job and make sure that we are good stewards of the public resource with which we have been entrusted. It has been a privilege for me to serve, and yes, I have loved this job, although not for the prestige, title, or ceremony, as many of you know, none of which I had much stomach for. I love the job for its potential to make this city, this country, this society that I love so much, fairer, more tolerant, more prosperous, and more just. Transparency in government and fairness in the treatment of all people are the basic foundation of democracy, and I have fought to ensure that those values are remembered whenever we are up here or are in closed sessions, working on issues of city governance. If I am unable, due to circumstances beyond my control, to commit the time necessary to perform my duty to the standard that I expect of myself, then I feel I should make room for someone else who can. In light of the many challenges that we have faced, all of us, in the past few years, which includes a global financial meltdown, I have always strived to serve, to do my best in the interest of the city of Garden Grove, to uphold its values and to serve its people. But like many business owners across our great country, I have faced great adversities in keeping my business afloat. This has meant more time, and in the near future, more traveling, in order to keep my business going, to meet payrolls and pay bills. I owe it to my family and to my employees who depend on their jobs for their livelihood to make my business work. Failure is not an option. However, these demands have made it more impossible with each passing month for me to devote the time and energy that it takes to help govern a city of almost two hundred thousand residents and a budget of over a hundred million dollars. I could easily serve out my term passively, sitting up here, but I could not live with the thought that I was just passing time while not truly living up to the demands of the position that any conscientious office holder would expect of himself or herself. Once I decided that I would not run for reelection, I had to also decide whether being a lame duck council member is what the people of this city deserve. The answer to me is clearly no. Therefore, it is with a heavy heart that I tender my resignation. But before I depart, I want to share with you a fear, a vision, if you will, that has terrified me. It is this fear that in many ways it drove me to run for office in the first place. That fear is that our community may be held hostage under the control of a small group of people, whose agenda are for the most part invisible to the public. of people, whose agenda are for the most part invisible to the public. We don't have to look very far to see situations such as in one of our neighboring cities, where with three votes on the council, many questionable things are done and tolerated. Fortunately, we do not have such a situation here in Garden Grove, and I'm proud of that However, we need to look at the situation that we have. For the council, or even a minority view on this council, to serve as a voice for transparency and fairness, there has to be check and balance in place. For myself, as a council member with no staff, working on a very part-time basis, which is very different from how I was able to serve the county, at the county level, on the board of supervisors, I have often time while sitting up here, questioned my own ability whether or not I'm doing my job adequately up here. Working with only information that has been presented to me without the ability to independently assess the foundation of the information presented to me has, to a large degree, minimized my effectiveness, even with all of the experience that I had brought with me into this position. The vulnerability of our system is that the city's decisions and directions can be somewhat unduly shaped and/or influenced by the few who have the advantage of inside knowledge and a long-working personal relationship. Of course, in a system of representative democracy like our system, we trust in the wisdom of our elected officials, that their votes reflect the will of the people they represent. The question for me personally is, with what I know, the information that's been presented to me, and more importantly, what is it that I don't know sitting up here? That as a council member, am I able to intelligently participate in defining the vision and direction for our city? Or am I simply along for the ride? By the time an issue comes to the council and is presented to me, much work has already been done. Can I, in a week's time or less, when I also have other issues on the agenda I have to think about, know enough about that particular issue with all of its nuances in order to feel confident that the direction we move in is the best, among many other directions that may be available, but maybe have not been presented to me? Now, mind you, I'm not talking about decisions that are harmful to the city. Thank God we don't have that kind of situation here. What I'm talking about is making the right choice. But in order to do that, we must know, we, the council members, must know about other choices that may exist. Just simply voting yea or nay on projects when they are presented alone without being put in a bigger context, to me, is not governing. It is not what I'm here to do. Governing requires that I take steps in order to fulfill a vision, or fine-tune a vision that we have previously formulated. I think more of that type of fine-tuning needs to happen. We are fortunate that we have a great city manager, Mr. Matt Fratell, but I think we ask too much of Mr. Fratell when we rely on him to do a lot of the deliberation and the vision forming for us. One example, to illustrate my point, not Mr. Fratell, but the point I'm making here about vision for the city, is redevelopment. Is the Harbor Corridor the only worthwhile direction for us to move in as a city? I'm not saying developing Harbor Boulevard is a bad idea. It is a great idea. It has saved us financially in many ways. But I question, shouldn't we allocate some of our resource into developing other areas in the city? This type of deliberation should happen more and should include more meaningful, uh, participation and input from, I think, more segments of our population. It needs to happen more. To his credit, Mr. Fratell seeks to be fair, and on his own has implemented many of the suggestions made by the council, including from me. But that speaks more to Mr. Fratell's ethics than to any procedure that is currently in place by us. And it's precisely this lack of meaningful check and balance, the procedural check and balance between council and staff, that is causing me the greatest concern. As a former prosecutor, efficacy or the procedure is key. You cannot build a system around the personality of the people in the system. The system has to exist and has to function independently of who is in place, because otherwise, we are dependent on the goodwill of whoever is in, in that position, and if they turn out to be having bad judgment, then we suffer. We cannot take that chance. The efficacy of our system should not be dependent on simply the goodwill or the personality of its people. If that's the case, I submit that we are asking for trouble at some point in the future. In this final hour on the dais, I sincerely want to thank all of my colleagues for a great two and a half years, almost two and a half years, sitting up here serving with you, and above all, the city staff, who have been friends, as well as brilliant servants of our beloved city. And as I leave the council, which is the second most important thing I have ever accomplished as a person, I cherish even more the blessings from God to allow me to fulfill to the best of my ability the most important accomplishments I have achieved as a person on this earth, that is, my role as a father and a husband, and to that I will go back. In the end, I pray for the well-being of all of us, especially as we travel through the challenging times that we are facing. And again, I thank you for the people, to the people of the city, for your trust in me and giving me the opportunity to serve you. Thank you, and God bless.
At this point, uh, I guess, I hate to say it, but I, um, accept with regret your resignation, and I personally want to thank you for the two to two and a half years of service that you have given to all of the people of Garden Grove. You've done an outstanding job, and I'm honored to have sat up here with you. I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Next regular meeting will be Tuesday, April, uh, 26th at 5:30 PM.